Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 13th, 2021. Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the matters pertaining to collective bargaining under the Taylor Law for the ASN, the YCT units, as well as to receive advice from the school attorney?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 13th, 2021. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the mother of Maureen Gallory, the grandmother of Tara Geiser, the grandmother of Angela Luongo, and the mother of Teresa Carey?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united in all, ready and just for all.
I just want to let everybody know Anthony Adelisandro is joining us by FaceTime tonight. He is unable to make the meeting. I want to remind everybody that New York State requires masks be worn at all times and it must cover your nose and your mouth. Thank you. We're going to go to our first public comment, which is gender-related items. If that was anybody signed up? No? Okay. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Ron?
Okay. Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. So there are a few items that I'd like to discuss this evening and provide our board and our community with an update on. The first is an overview of the year that was. We're in our final board meeting of the calendar year 2021, and it's been a most extraordinary year. As I think back to January and February and each subsequent month, there have been some unique challenges, but they have not been unique to the pandemic. There have been so many other aspects of the organization that we have had to address. And this evening, I'd like to deliver a presentation to the board, a very brief presentation to the board that can just provide you an update from each of our department heads. We have our department heads here, and I thank you all for being here. I really appreciate your presence tonight and your presentation this evening in advance. So Yvette, if I can ask for you to pull up the presentation. It's brief. If members of my administrative team speak quickly, it's because they know that we want to keep the presentation brief so that the meeting can continue along. I just want to start by sharing some very quick and broad-stroke reflections on the year that was and all that we experienced. It has been quite the challenge, quite the challenge. We began this year with a calendar year with just keeping our schools open. As I look back 12 months ago, the conversation was more focused on how do we keep our students in school? Because first and foremost, we want our kids in school. And we want to keep our students safe, and we want our staff safe, and we want to return to normal as quickly as possible. As I sit here 12 months later, we've made some great strides. We're not there yet, but we've made some great strides. And I don't think it's necessarily a Yorktown-specific situation. I think it's more global than it is isolated to Yorktown. Yvette, we'll go to the next slide. I'd like to just begin by sharing with our board who will be presenting this evening. This is the order that we'll be presenting in this evening. Each member of our leadership team will come up to the podium, they'll address the board, provide an update, they'll introduce the person who will follow them. So I know my team knows who's following their presentation, and they'll introduce them. And we'll, again, be as respectful of time as humanly possible. Yvette, if I can ask you to go to the next slide, please? We begin everything with our vision statement. This has been the vision statement of our school district, I want to say, since about 2017, although we've been living this vision for many years prior to 2017. So we strive to cultivate empathy first and foremost. We strive to nurture creativity, innovation. And I won't go through the rest of the vision statement. It's right here posted, and of course, this presentation will be posted to our website. I believe tomorrow we'll have this up, is my hope. So we'll have the content posted for you to review. You can go to the next slide. We very quickly became the home of E-steam. And I've had some people reach out and say, "Well, you spelled a steam wrong on the sign out front." And it was intentional. We're the home of E-steam, an empathy-based approach to steam education. And I could never be more proud of the work that we have done in E-steam. It's been recognized across the country. Our work has been recognized on the international stage. It's been recognized locally and everywhere in between. And we're proud of all the good things that we have been able to do. Now, these are just one of many small measures or reflections of the good work happening. What I'm most inspired by is going into a classroom and seeing children work together and think together and solve problems creatively and are really engaged in learning. And most importantly, that joy of learning is there. Now, we'll begin a department-by-department brief update. It's two slides per department. It's this introductory slide and one other slide. And it talks about the year that was and things we're looking forward to in 2022, calendar year 2022. Now, I understand that that straddles two school years for us, the second semester of this school year and the opening months of next school year. Ms. Forsberg is not able to join us this evening, our Director of Technology, so Mrs. O'Shea will be delivering the technology portion of the presentation, as well as the curriculum portion of the presentation. So at this time, I'd like to invite our athletic director, Mr. Barrett, to the podium to present to the board and to our community.
Just want to make sure this is on? Okay, perfect. Good evening to the Board of Education, Dr. Hatter, Ms. O'Shea, and Mr. Cole, and our school community. Tonight, I wanted to share some insight into the past year and take a look at the upcoming school year. For those of you who don't know my background, I was an elementary school teacher, so I always start with a little bit of a story, and I happen to be a movie buff. So I just recently was watching Apollo 13, and obviously, we know the story where they're in stress and they're not going to be coming home, where people think they're not going to be coming home. But at one point, one guy says, "This is going to be the worst disaster in NASA's history." And the other gentleman who was in touch, in charge, I should say, quickly turned and said, "No, I think this might be our finest moment." And I think that over the last year, we've seen our school district, the leadership, rise to the occasion under some really, really difficult situations. And I just want to talk about some of those things. So we clearly had some challenging situations, but we had some wonderful people step up. First and foremost, I just want to give you an example of that idea. So Dennis Verboise and his crew, we ran six track meets in the middle of winter with snow on the ground because Dennis thought it was, and his crew, thought it was important that kids have that opportunity. The conversation was as quickly as, "Dennis, do you think we could do this? Yes, we'll make it happen." So I was, I can't say that I was more proud of that moment to be at Yorktown because of the quick response and the quick work that these guys done, did, I should say. The past year, in the midst of the pandemic, we saw 48 teams commit to playing sports. And when I say commit to playing sports, that means it took a whole effort from our whole group, from you guys saying okay to some of the things that were in place, to our superintendent saying that we can do that, and of course, our athletes saying, "Yeah, we can make that happen." So we had four seasons, fall one, winter, fall two, and spring. As you know, there were various protocols that had to be developed for athletes and coaches and spectators, including in those where the masks that we're currently wearing, social distancing, and spectator limits, which were not fun for anyone, right? We want parents to be able to see their kids play as well. Additionally, we developed protocols for student athletes who came down with COVID in an effort to make sure they returned to play safely, considering the amount of unknowns that were at the time. That didn't happen magically. Our school nurse, Kim Cortez, was instrumental in that happening. Our athletic trainer, Justin Giuliano, was instrumental. And of course, our medical director, Dr. Cusaro, all were important factors in making sure that those protocols were developed so that kids could play safely and, God forbid, anything happened, return to play safely. With all that going on in the world, we saw our students take ownership in the protocols in an effort to salvage any semblance of a season. I am so proud to say that we had our teams participate in the vast majority of the games that were allowed, with very few instances really throughout the entire year. I applaud them for their efforts and being able to create so many memories, because that's what this was about, creating memories. They went on to accomplish many outstanding individual and team accomplishments, including in, sorry for reading this, but the list is lengthy. We had three All-League Honorable Mention winners, 57 All-League winners, two All-County, four All-Section Honor Mention winners, 21 All-Section athletes, three All-Americans. In addition, we had a Player of the Year in their league, three Low-Hud First Team All-Stars and Second Team All-Stars, one Golden Dozen Honor Mention winner, one Comeback Player of the Year, a Pitcher of the Year winner, a 12th Man of the Year, a Diamond Nine winner, one Section One Leadership Award winner, two CONED Award winners, and NIA AAA winner at the section, state, and regional level, which is, they divide the country, I should say, into eight sections. So they won their section, which was amazing, because you're going against eight other states. And we were awarded the New York State Scholar-Athlete School of Excellence for at least the fifth year in a row. I'm trying to figure out how many years we've had that in a row, but certainly, the five years, the past five years, we have. We also saw success on the field as a group with eight league championships and one regional championship. A nice addition, move away from that now. The nice addition is our gym. Obviously, you guys know about it, but our community is just starting to know about it as they start to come back to events in the gym. So we've obviously had volleyball in the fall season, basketball now, and wrestling. Most recently, we just had a wrestling tournament this weekend, and the compliments were, you know, amazing. We have become a little bit of the envy of many of the school districts in Section One once they step into our gym. So I just want to go over what that entailed quickly, was a remodeling of the gym floor, new padding on the walls, new bleachers, new heating and air conditioning systems, new LED lighting, new baskets, which were long overdue, right? I'm so happy for those. And of course, our new scoreboards. The game experience, I'm going to tell you, is second to none. If you've come to a basketball game or you come to a wrestling match, the video board is up, music is playing in a great sound system, and the kids are just excited to be there. It's a complete opposite effect of last year when we actually had no fans in the stands. So it's welcome by all. In addition, we saw an increase in our bleacher capacity at Charlie Murphy Field, and of course, the nice concrete pad for our concession stand. Looking ahead to 2022, so there's a lot to look forward to, right? Things are starting to get a little bit better in terms of allowing spectators to be at games. We're still wearing our masks, but again, we are playing, which is great. We're playing more games than we played last year. We're having more people attend events than we certainly did have last year. So we'll, but we'll continue to monitor, as we always do, the environment and hope to make the best out of whatever the situation comes, as it comes, I should say. We are currently working through the logistics of our scoreboard grant that we were finally awarded after many years. For those of you who don't know, we have a video board in our gym. This would be a grander scale video board. The cool thing now is we're trying to figure out how we can draw our students in to help with content. Content is what drives those boards. So if there's no content, the boards are really like any other board. But if we're able to bring in our students, have them work on these videos and messages and all the type of things that they're more inclined to be able to do than I am, certainly, it should be a fun experience, as it has been so far, just on a limited basis and the limited time that we've had our current board. Last but not least, I'm looking forward to the renovations that'll happen in our middle school gym. Dennis, again, was awesome in making sure the construction here went well. I'm looking forward to working with him and see what the new middle school gym will look like. I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen, and I wish you all the happiest and healthiest holiday season. Okay, sorry. I didn't know if there was another portion of this, but at this point, I'd like to introduce Lisa O'Shea, who will talk about curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. I'm happy to have this opportunity to share with the board some updates from the curriculum office. When I look back on this year, 2021, there's many things that the district is proud of, and I just want to highlight a few. In the summer of 2021, we provided a comprehensive K-12 summer remedial program for our students. This was in addition to the traditional extended school year program that the PPS office handles, and Mr. Rosen will speak about. What we did this year is we had K-5 students in person for a three-week period with a focus on ELA and math skills with embedded special ed-related service and ENL support for students as needed. In the middle school level, we had in-person ESL supports over the summer. We had virtual reading and content area supports for middle school students. And at the high school, we provided over 110 credit recovery courses for our students with embedded content area teacher support. Our entire goal was to help our students achieve the learning standards and to provide this in a very comprehensive way this past summer. And we're also in the middle of a K-5 writing pilot now. With the help of Ms. Chesser, our, some of our K-5 teachers are engaged in a writing pilot that started at the end of last school year. We're looking at exploring potential primary resources for writing instruction at the K-5 level. To date, we've done two pilots of two different programs, and we're currently meeting to decide where we move forward from here. In addition, with Ms. Froth's help at the math, in the, I'm sorry, with Ms. Froth's help at the middle school, our math teachers in grade six and seven are implementing the Into Math program for the first time this year. The result of that would mean that we have a comprehensive K-7 primary resource for mathematics instruction that is vertically aligned. We're very excited about that. We are just starting now a K-12 after-school support program that will run from now through the spring for students, again, to help all students achieve the level of mastery on the standards that we would hope we can do. During this year, we had to hire additional teachers, additional staff due to enrollment and to changing student need. I wanted to point that out because several of those positions that we hired are currently covered under some of the grant money that was provided through the federal government, whether it be the ARP grant or the ESER grant. So those positions that are in existence right now are covered by that money. However, we expect these positions to be needed in the future, and the grant money won't sustain that. So as we continue to budget and look at our budget moving forward, we need to be mindful of some of those positions that are currently funded outside of the district budget. As we look forward to 2022, the work doesn't stop, it continues, and we're looking to plan a comprehensive summer program again, or next summer. In Yorktown High School, our high school administrators and the teachers have developed two courses that will begin implementation next year in the math department. One is data science, and the other is civil engineering and architecture. By adding the civil engineering and architecture course, that gives us a three-year sequence in engineering that we started four years ago to build. So it's really exciting for us. We continue to monitor enrollment and the impact on staffing, and then impact on the budget that might follow as well. The New York State Department of Education has published new standards for computer science and digital fluency, with the expected latest implementation date to start in 2023 in September. So we're already beginning that work, and Mr. Miller is unpacking that information, looking at our current practices, and he is working towards curricular alignment, what does that look like, potential resources we may need, and embedded professional development. So those are just some areas that we are working towards as we continue to move the district in all aspects of curriculum and instruction. I'm going to ask at this point, Mr. Verboise is going to speak about the facilities department.
Thank you, Ms. O'Shea. The 2020-21 school year presented some unique challenges for our facilities department as we navigated the ever-changing guidelines of the CDC and local health departments in providing for the care and well-being of our students, teachers, staff during this COVID pandemic. From the very beginning of the pandemic, our district has and continues to be extremely proactive in reducing the spread of this virus. Maintaining central inducted HVAC systems in optimum efficiencies to deliver the cleanest possible outside air to all classrooms and offices is paramount, and air filtration is crucial. The industry identifies MERV, or Minimum Efficiency Reporting Values, in determining the quality of an air filter. The rating is based on how successful a filter is at trapping airborne contaminants. The higher the MERV rating, the more successful the filter is at catching particles. The district uses MERV 13 filters, replacing the conventional MERV 8 filters, allowing upwards to 80% more capture of dust, pollen, bacteria, and viruses from entering our school buildings. A timely replacement of such filters is constantly monitored. The use of polycarbonate barriers, and in most instances, our O&M department's fabrication and installation of such panels in main offices, cafeterias, offices, and classrooms prove beneficial as we return to in-person learning for the start of the 2020-21 school year. Another defense in eliminating the spread of infectious diseases and germs in our school buildings is through effective and thorough cleaning and disinfecting. And while there is no substitute for the daily cleaning, our custodial membership maintains each and every school day and evening, the district's investment in our Clorox 360 electrostatic sprayers demonstrates our commitment to effectively sanitize our schools for all students, teachers, and staff. And I thank Dr. Hatter and our Board of Education for their continued support and funding of these equipment purchases in all our school buildings. As our athletic director, Mr. Barrett, mentioned earlier, our high school gymnasium underwent renovations this past summer that included new lighting, bleachers, wall and ceiling panels, two new rooftop HVAC units outfitted with MERV 14 filters. Additionally, site drainage and concrete walks were installed, along with new sections of bleachers at our Charlie Murphy Field. Our steering committee, along with our district architects and construction manager, identified projects at all our school buildings that will be submitted to State Education Department as part of the district's five-year building condition survey, or BECS. Such projects are prioritized by this committee and will be completed in current or future O&M budgets or via capital improvement funding resources. This past summer also saw the construction of a new ball field at Cronpon Elementary, complete with perimeter field drainage, ball field clay, and a chain-linked fence backed up. Many thanks to the Cronpon PTA for their financial support with this project. And last, but certainly not least, is the continued work and dedication of our facilities team. The creation of two maintenance four-person positions in recent years have provided for better oversight and efficiencies in our grounds and building staffs. Mr. Michael Grundig and Mr. Diego Orojo bring many years of experience to their respective positions and are passionate and caring supervisors who aren't afraid to jump in and lend assistance when needed. And Ms. Lisa Scanapico, our administrative assistant, is the glue that keeps our department functioning. Her professionalism and can-do approach to everything and anything that arises is both refreshing and appreciated by all who have dealings with O&M. I look forward to many more years of collaborative work with my colleagues. Looking ahead to 2022, we'll continue to be proactive in our approach to disinfect and clean our schools. We will continue with the daily uses of Clorox 360 electrostatic sprayers and continue cleaning efforts in all common touchpoints in our school buildings. Our summer 2022 capital reserve projects are on this evening's agenda for award, as we look to get a jumpstart on equipment submittals with the anticipation of continued shipping delays due to COVID. This summer's work will see renovations at our high school cafeteria and kitchen servery with new lighting ceilings and package heating and air conditioning system. Our middle school gymnasium will receive new lighting and wall pads, floor restoration, and rooftop heating and air conditioning units. Our three elementary schools will have their respective gym and cafeteria heating and ventilating units outfitted with refrigerant components for cooling. And Cronpon will see some aesthetically pleasing wall treatments and flooring work performed in its cafeteria. LED site lighting enhancements, which proved successful on the high school, middle school campus, will be targeted for our elementary school parking lots and driveways. Additionally, replacement of exterior lighting at all building entries and exits will ensure better and safer coverages with the district's new security cameras. And lastly, continued training and mentoring of all 43 members of our custodial staff to ensure that our buildings and grounds are clean, safe, and environmentally pleasing and worthy of the Yorktown brand is our goals for 2022. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Dr. Sheila McGinnis to speak on behalf of Human Resources.
Thank you, Dr. Hatter, and the board, for allowing me to update you on the Human Resources functions. Okay, 2001 was probably highlighted by our recruitment efforts. In 2021, we had 75 staff members leave the district. As a result, we hired 132 new staff members. These included not only new teachers, but also aides, assistants, and leave replacements, in addition to 24 substitutes, which were needed to cover absences as a result of the pandemic. In HR, we also had some turnover. Two of the three positions in HR turned over in the last year and a half. So it was very difficult with the short staff in HR to have the additional recruitment, but we now are fully staffed, and I think we have a wonderful team. Attendance became an issue because of the pandemic. The state and federal government issued many regulations, which then required us to implement changes. The HR department implemented a process to ensure that we had the proper documentation when we issued the paid administrative leave, so that we weren't giving away time. We digitized many documents, specifically our contracts. We're finding that in the last couple of years, we're getting more and more requests for documentation. In the past, it required us to go into the file cabinets and search for them, many times having to go to Building B and look through boxes and boxes. So we started a process of digitizing the most common requested documents, and we will continue that into the future. We resumed HR outreach. As a result of the pandemic, some of the things that we did in HR, we could not do because of social distancing. So this year, we did resume the HR visits. We visit the, each building at least once a month to have open HR hours, where staff can just come and ask questions without having to make an appointment. We also increased our visits. In the past, I would go to the staff when they had issues and wanted meetings rather than having them come to us. So 2021 was a very busy year. We're looking forward to 2022. Recruitment again will be the major issue. Last year, we had 33 staff retirements. I've offered some webinars for staff interested in retiring, and this year, we've had over 60 people attend those webinars. So I expect more retirements this year than we had last year. As Ms. O'Shea mentioned, and I'm sure Mr. Rosen will mention, students are coming in with more needs and requiring more staffing support, so that will also increase the recruitment efforts next year. We continue to digitize the employment documentation. We are setting up our digitized personnel records to hopefully eliminate most of the paper copies, so that it's easier access and safer storage. In the past, I did a HR newsletter three times a year, just updating staff on important things they need to know, reminders of things they might have forgotten. That will again resume in January. And training the new staff. Our two personnel assistants have been in their positions for less than two years, one less than two weeks. So there's going to be a lot of training. We did a little reorganization, and the responsibilities have shifted. This hopefully will help in the cross-training, so that both are up to speed in case there is an absence or of staff calls, whoever answers. Whoever answers the phone can answer the question. It was very difficult losing the two staff. They had been here one over 20 years, one over 10 years, so there was a lot of brain drain, which scared me a lot. But fortunately, we have a great new team, and with the ability to have new eyes looking at the functions, we are looking to increase our methods of efficiency and have some more reorganization of the tasks in the future. And those are just short highlights of HR. We do a lot more, but these seem like the focus for this past year. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Mike Rosen, who will talk about PPS.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mrs. Carbone, Mr. Magnati, board trustees, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, and Mr. Cole for providing us this opportunity tonight. I always like to start with some of the -- we have a lot of great things going on in the school district, but I always like to start with some of the things that just bring a smile to all of our faces, and that's what we do in the summer. In the summer, we run an extended school year program, as Mrs. O'Shea said. The program has continued to grow, and I always speak to, even though we're in 2021, what we did in the summer of 2020. I spoke to it at a previous board meeting. Still amazes me is how the school district came together, getting busing, transportation, running a program when no one else, most other school districts, were not in person that year. This past year, we ran six classes in the extended school year. We also have run virtual programs. We've run in-person other programs to, again, support the needs of the students, to make up any missing work that they would have had during the school year, so they can benefit from the level of instruction. We also, in 2020, was the last time we had our Pioneer, our Special Olympics team. The league started up again this school year for 21-22. We had our first game on November 17th, playing up at Carmel. And last week, on the 8th of December, we hosted our first home game against Lakeland. And we worked very closely with Mr. Barrett, using the new gym for all of our home games. The students here in the high school turned out to support our athletes, and it was quite the atmosphere. And I hope that I'll make sure you guys get the schedule to come to games as we move along. Some of the information I'm going to share, I just want you to realize that the PPS department works with and requires the support of many, mainly Ms. Caroline Almeida, the assistant director, Kelly Rudick, supervisor of special education, our administrative assistants, the school psychologists, the principals, and all the special education teachers. Without them, we don't get through all this information. But what we are seeing is a significant increase in our CSE, CPSC, 504 referrals, meetings, and placement. And I just want to share some of the data with you. This past summer, the PPS department participated and ran 145 meetings. Those were initial CSE meetings, reevaluation meetings, transfer meetings, 504 meetings, CPSC meetings. So that's in a two-month time period, where 145 meetings were held. We have typically averaged about six or seven CSE referrals, K to 12, every week, that are coming through the district and coming through the PPS department. We've welcomed 55 new registrants who have moved to the Yorktown Central School District from January 2021 to at the end of November. We've had 55. So it's about an average of five new students moving in who are coming to us with individual education programs and requiring service. Just to give you an idea of numbers, we're typically around 550 total classified students. In October, we were already over 600, and we're approximately about 627 total classified students as of today. So you're talking approximately 70 more students than in probably the last number of years. We're also responsible for students who go to private and parochial schools. So we do have one main parochial school in town, which is seeing a big increase because some of the other parochial schools in the area have closed. So we are also responsible for the CSE meetings for those students, the annual reviews, and also arranging for and providing the services at those schools. As far as staffing, in the 21-22 school year, as I said, we've added a supervisor of special education. We added special education teachers. We added one school nurse. We added one speech and language therapist, and we've had to subsidize with some contractors for additional speech and language. We added an occupational therapy assistant. We added another social worker here at the high school to support social and emotional needs of the students. We also have an added temporary school psychologist who's helping us with -- more students equals more reevaluations. So she's completing about 40 to 45 reevaluations for us. She's also helping at Mohansick and Cronpon with a lot of behavior plans and functional behavioral assessments that we would have normally had to send out to other places. So that's '21. And looking ahead to '22, you know, in past years, I would come to the board meetings and present, you know, my two-year vision, and I would have an idea of what we're talking about. With all the added students, that's getting harder and harder to do. I really don't know what to expect. I do know that we will continue to see growth in CPSC. CSE and the 504 referrals is going to continue to increase. We do see even more need for staff in the area of special education teachers, related service providers, behaviorists. Those will be needed for the '22-23 school year. The other piece is space. We have worked really well with the principals, Mr. Verboise. If there's a spot to create a classroom over the last few years, we've put up walls. We have been so creative with finding space. We added a supervisor up in my office. We needed an office. We put up a wall. We created space. If you've been here long enough, we've created kitchens, still nicer than my kitchen at home. I still talk about that. We've created probably four or five bathrooms, so that students don't have to leave to use the bathroom if they have some significant needs in that area. Looking forward, if we continue, if we have the growth that we're continuing to see, we are concerned about what space will look like as we move forward. And that's pretty much it for the PPS department. I'd like to introduce Mrs. O'Shea, who will discuss technology.
I'm back again. So I do know that Ms. Forsberg was very disappointed to not be able to be here today, and I will say that she is exceptional at her job at continuing to keep our district running in all aspects of technology, and her team is really top-notch. And I don't know where we would have been over the last two years without her leadership in the technology department. So I have some notes that I'd like to share in regard to the technology update. Over the last year, the district has installed an all-new wireless infrastructure. There's a new state-of-the-art computer -- securities cameras are inside and outside all of our buildings. There's new phone software that's been installed, and we are awaiting the installation of the new physical phones across the districts. When we did go into a hybrid and first the remote model, we needed additional Chromebooks to create a one-to-one environment, K-12. Although software and monitoring for cybersecurity have been in place due to the malware attack in October of 2020 and after an in-depth series of cyber testing, additional software and hardware were purchased to keep the network even more secure. When we moved to 100% online format, and also when we moved to the hybrid model, additional professional development needs were necessary, and consultants were brought in for specific types of teaching, whether it was hybrid or remote. We also had specific training due to various software that we brought in, whether it was Seesaw or Paradek, thank you. Those required some specific training for our teachers. We've increased instructional software. When we went to our hybrid and remote models, we brought in some additional software to work in that format. What we've noticed over time is that the benefits of that software is still necessary in a fully in-person model. So some of that instructional technology, we will continue as we move forward. Looking ahead in 2020, in the technology department, Ms. Forsberg and her team are looking to expand the one-to-one Chromebook initiative from sixth through 12th grade students to third through 12th grade students. We will need additional Chromebooks to replace older Chromebooks in the additional grades. And right now, our Chromebooks are on a three-to-four-year turnover cycle. She's working towards the full implementation of Sharp touchboards. That began in the summer of 2019. At that point, they were replacing our smart boards with Sharp interactive boards. That needs to continue. Right now, we have about 15 to 30 that they're doing each year, and as they are dying or no longer working effectively, we're moving towards getting all of our classrooms back with interactive Sharp boards. Cybersecurity and software monitoring, those additional needs have increased our wireless budget as well as the network budget moving forward. So there'll also be funds needed to have additional training and testing in the cybersecurity systems. Ms. Forsberg is looking for sharing with the board that there'll be additional technician will be needed to support the increased technology use in the district. The help desk tickets have increased over 100%, and this comes from just overall increased technology use. It also comes from relying on technology for the camera systems, the phone systems, HVAC, printing, new hardware, new software, transportation. Additionally, Ms. Forsberg started a family help desk in March of 2020, and that continues to be something that family and students are using, even though we're back in person. So that needs to be monitoring, monitored. We have senior engineers who are sometimes pulled to work on larger projects and are not available to the teachers and the students readily during the day. Another big initiative that Ms. Forsberg and the tech department will be working on is to update the required technology plan for the State Education Department. That is due in June, and it will take us from 2022 through the 2024-25 school year. So those are the things that are happening in technology. And now, Mr. Cole is going to sum all of this up for us.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Shea, and to everybody who made presentations here tonight. So the business office through the year of 2021 has managed the day-to-day operations with regard to finance to accommodate everything you're listening to tonight. Many of the COVID-related issues that we had to deal with, that you heard about here in the early part of '21, were not budgeted. We were able to manage those things on a very tight budget and a very short leash, frankly, but we were able to do that in the early part of '21, incorporate that into the budget that we're operating in the current year. We thank the very talented staff in the business office, led by Alicia Sigvartson, for their efforts in that regard. We continue to oversee the school lunch program and transportation. Transportation, led by Patty Sauber, was instrumental in navigating the waters with a new transportation provider last year and into the current year. And the school lunch program, led by Aramark, that is our provider, were just wonderful throughout the COVID-related period of the early parts of 2021, where normal operations were scarce, to say the least, because of restrictions and new protocols and so forth. We continue to monitor our security posture within the school district. Mrs. O'Shea talked about security cameras that have been deployed throughout the school district. Ms. Forsberg has been leading that charge. We also continue to entertain certain new technologies and capabilities, not the least of which was something that Dr. Hatter and I investigated just last week, that you may hear a little bit more about, that we're very excited about as a tool to help us in emergency response. Looking ahead to 2022, everything you've heard tonight translates into dollars and cents at some point, additional staffing or the anticipation of completing certain projects and being able to do certain things into the future. We are well into the budget process for the '22-23 school year. We anticipate working very closely, again, with the Financial Advisory Committee of the Board of Education, and then through the presentations, which will begin in January. But we are on a timeline. We've hit all our marks to this point along that way, and everything that we discussed here this evening has already been discussed individually with each one of the directors and managers you heard from this evening. So we have -- we're going to try to quantify everything and include it in this document that'll be put before you in very precise presentations, starting very quickly. So the next slide, I believe, is the timeline of the budget process, which Dr. Hatter will go through for you. It's pretty consistent with years past, and we are well underway into the month of December. Dr. Hatter?
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, too. Thank you, Lisa, and to all of our directors this evening for presenting. This is our budget development timeline, and it is an aggressive timeline. It's hard to imagine that, once you get to November, you're already planning for the upcoming school year. You're only two months or three months into the current school year, and you're already surveying departments and meeting with different groups and building principals to determine what the needs are for the upcoming school year, having not even gone through the winter and spring. But it is a lengthy and thorough process that we have to be able to develop with great precision. So it begins early. My first presentation to the board will be after we return from the holiday recess, and we'll have a series of budget presentations. And all the presentations are going to be posted to our website, and they'll all certainly be available in video format as well. In terms of next steps and moving forward, there's a lot that I can say about next steps and moving forward. We want to move back closer to normal each day. What I'll tell you is, in three days, we've received three different memos from the Department of Health. December 8th, 9th, and 10th, three different memos that we've received. So now, which one contradicts the one prior to it, or which one do you look at and you say, "Well, wait a minute. I've got questions." They're trending in the right direction, which is a direction that creates an environment for faculty and staff to return closer to a more normal environment, which is what we all want. And when I say more, I'd like to get us back to full normal, pre-pandemic, the way things looked. It would be so much more -- it's just what would be great for our entire organization, children and staff alike. So we move closer. Our team is meeting tomorrow, a different team, not the team here. I have another group of our school nurses, and Mr. Rosen will be meeting to discuss the three memos in three days, and trying to just make sense of what the December 8th memo says, compare it to the December 9th memo, and then review it in context of the December 10th memo, and then work through where it all resides. But there are some things that we're doing that shouldn't change. So the MERV 13 filtration, it's not something that you really see. That should stay in. There's no reason to do away with that. That's something that we're not the wisest for and we're the better for. And then, second, is to continue to improve. As great as our department heads are, and they're great, and their departments are great, and our school principals are terrific, and everything happening in so many areas of our organization is terrific, but we need to do better. We always need to do better, and that's something that we recognize. And one of the things that Mr. Cole didn't share is, in addition to all of the other responsibilities, at 4:00 in the morning, when I'm in the parking lot on a day we're anticipating snow, that's whom I'm on the phone with. And we're talking about what we see and the reports we're hearing, comparing notes and making decisions as to whether it'll be a snow day, snow delay, or regular opening. And quite often, at 4:00, 4:15, I'm driving past Mr. Verboise in the parking lot, and we're there. That happened this week. Now, our community, we don't broadcast the potential for a snow day, but I forget what it was last week. I think it was last week. It can't be this week. It's Monday. But last week, there was a potential for snow, and then there was precipitation in the day, and then there was forecast for temperatures dropping overnight and refreezing. Those types of things had Dennis here in the parking lot at 4:15, 4:20, whatever time it was, making sure that we could address those spots for a normal opening and a more seamless, and a most seamless opening. And part of the great part of my job is I get, I've got to know as much as I can about every different aspect and every different department and every different initiative and effort that's happening here, and trying to engage and push the thinking so that ultimately our students are best served. So I appreciate the expertise added here. I appreciate all of the information that you've shared, really good information and important information. And this is where the presentations are derived from, in terms of the budget presentations. And that takes me to my final point, which is we're planning for '22-23, and I, looking forward, and Tom's office is already crunching numbers, looking at different parameters. looking at different parameters to consider as we develop the budget and develop each individual budget presentation for your consideration and hopefully your adoption, with obviously whatever amendments we need to make to move forward. But that's our update for this year. That's what I wanted to share with you. I have some additional items, but that concludes this portion of the presentation. If there are any questions, we're happy to take them.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Lisa, did you have any questions?
No questions. Just thank you to all of you for all the work that you do.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thank you.
Rashmi?
No, I have no questions. I just want to say it's been a difficult year, the last 18 months. And I'm so impressed to see how much incremental progress we have made. Like, we hear about it on a daily, weekly basis, but to see it all summed up like this, I think was terrific. So thank you.
Mike?
I do actually have a question, and this goes to the increase in PPS. So is it, we have increased this year because there are new students, but we're also seeing increase in our current students' needs. And how much of that can we attribute to COVID? Do we expect that to move forward to next year? Because I know COVID has been extremely difficult on our students, and I just don't know if there's a correlation that we're having to deal with.
I think a little bit of all of it. I think COVID has led a lot of families to move north and leave their communities. So I think we're seeing a lot of students move in. I do think that we do have some young students who are just getting back into school. So sometimes those referrals are coming. And remember, six or seven a month doesn't mean that everyone ends up classified. They might need additional services because they miss kindergarten. In first grade, a lot of it being remote. So we're working through all of that. I think it's going to continue because we're seeing more in the mental health piece at the older levels. So that's why we added a social worker here at the high school. I was in a meeting this morning, and we shared last year what the number of students who, you know, were hospitalized, and that's a concern. So part of all the numbers and the needs in the high school would be how we can keep the students from going into hospitals, how we can keep them from going out of districts. So we're seeing more of that. Some of the budget impact is also students moving in who are already out of districts. So some of that 55 were students who were already placed out. But we are seeing more needs. So while the number is high, the needs of those students is greater, and it continues to be greater. More students with Level III autism are coming in, our numbers of preschool students. So we're seeing that from the little ones. I think they're moving into the community when they're young. I think everyone here, we have a great reputation, and they come here, and we provide great services to them. And I think you put everything that you said leads to an increase across the board.
Normally, though, you have been very good at predicting because you follow these students from preschool. So you have been very good at predicting what's coming in. So to have such a large increase, I just did, was it all new kids moving in? Or was it other kids who had effects of COVID and other, being home for 18 months, that caused issues that we needed referrals for?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It is. I think that we're seeing it from every which way.
All right. I guess the answer is, is there anything we can be doing proactively to help students who have been affected negatively by COVID and other things?
You know, and I talk to Mrs. O'Shea all the time, and we're having, you'll see on the board agenda, people approved to support students after school. We're working with the high school to do some other social, emotional pieces. We did that last summer. We not only had the ESY program, we had the in-person program, but we also had a psychologist and a social worker who kept in contact with students who they were concerned about. Normally, students walk out in June, and we don't keep in touch with them until they come back in September. Everyone was very concerned about that. So we have a clinical team that kept in contact, had meetings throughout the summer with students, and I think that has all helped.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to single you out, but you guys do a phenomenal job, and you have our neediest students. So we just want to make sure that we can help in any way that we can to make sure our students' needs are met. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Oh, Pete, did you have any questions? I'm sorry. No. I didn't look down that way. I'm sorry. I'll move you down on this side now. Okay. Ron, did you want to finish?
Yeah. So just again, thank you to our team. Dr. McGinnis spoke about HR and spoke very briefly, but we have about 600 employees with about a dozen different collective bargaining agreements that we have to navigate and know really well and adhere to, and all of our directors. And I see Ms. Almeida, Ms. Rudic in the audience, and I thank them for joining us this evening as well. In terms of just some other items that I wanted to share, I provided a COVID update to our community last week. On Tuesday, there were some key points that I shared. That video has been posted, I believe it's been posted to our website. It was supposed to be posted, I believe, the following day. So by Wednesday, it should have been up, if not Wednesday, then certainly Thursday. And it was a very brief presentation that spoke to some of what we're seeing. We're seeing an uptick in numbers here. Fortunately, what we're hearing, and this is all anecdotal, I'm not that kind of doctor, so I wouldn't be able to tell you this from a medical standpoint. But what I'm hearing anecdotally are the cases are very mild. Students seem to be doing okay with the illness. However, one positive student can quarantine five, 10, or 15 other students. So we are working with the county on a test-to-stay program. They have given an okay. However, their memo, that was the December 9th memo, created more questions for me than it did answers. So that's something that we're working through with them. And we're going to pick up some tests from them later this week. I don't know what day we're going, but we're going later this week. So more information to come on that. The presentation should be published to our website. In terms of our Cultural Awareness and Equity Task Force, we continue to have the in-person meetings with members of our community, and that will continue into, I don't know if we have any next week, but certainly after the holiday break, we'll continue with the meetings. At this point, we've had about 25 people register to meet in person. So we look forward to meeting with anyone who has registered. We're going to close the registration after the New Year. So I would say January 3rd, I believe, is the date that I put out to close the registration, to have the in-person meeting. So if anybody is interested in having the in-person meeting or putting your feedback online through the digital survey, that will close January 3rd. I encourage you to, between now and then, if you're interested in sharing your perspective, you're welcome to do that or scheduling an in-person meeting. Two more items. There have been some concerns about library books in our high school library. So I just want to share a little bit about that. There is a board policy that speaks to the process to review concerns. It's Policy 1420 and the subsequent regulation. Thus far, every book that has been brought to our attention is going to undergo the review process that's prescribed by board policy. In most instances, if not in all instances, at least that I'm aware of, there's one copy of the book in the library. So if the committee is going to review it, they need the book to review. So those books would not be on the shelf during the pendency of the review as the team reviews the content and educational value of the books. So more information will come from that, but I wanted to provide you an update as to where we are. We are adhering to the board policy as we're required to, and more information to come. In terms of just one final item before I close, or two final items, we've returned to in-person events. So that's a terrific thing. We've had concerts in here. We had about three or four concerts in this facility last week. We've had athletic events that are so widely attended, and I'm just so happy that we're back to that and having our students and families in the stands and having our families able to enjoy watching their children play live. It was very meaningful and very emotional to be able to see. We continue that. This week, we have some additional performances. Our chorus is scheduled to perform this week, both middle school and high school in person, and that's terrific. We have some great athletic contests that are coming up. Some outdoors when we do some track events, and then some indoors in our gymnasium. And we're looking forward to continuing that. It's just great to feel that energy. Last week was a proud night. We had a concert in here, packed house. It was terrific. And then we had a basketball game against Lakeland in the gymnasium. Again, another packed house, and the energy on our campus is absolutely terrific and something that I think we all are happy to welcome back. I included this in my newsletter, but I thought that I would share it again because it's so special to hear. At one of our football games, we call it the Pink Night, the Pink Game. We don't take a gate admission. Rather, it's donations that are made. And the donations were made to a great organization, a great local organization, and that's Support Connection, which provides breast cancer and ovarian cancer support. And our football team and cheerleading team donated those funds at gate collection through the Husker Club to the organization. It was $3,334 that they raised in gate receipts for this organization. I'm proud of them for doing that, and they're to be commended for that. And then finally, this is our last meeting before we head into the recess. We still have eight school days left, and I'm looking forward to every one of the eight days that we have left. But I really do wish our families just time together, time together with each other as a family to enjoy just a pause and time together to celebrate the holidays, to celebrate the New Year, reflect on 2021, but also embrace all the promise that 2022 will bring. So to the members of the board, I wish you all the very best, and I wish you the happiest of holidays. And to my team, I'm so grateful for you. I appreciate you. It's my pleasure to work with each of you and to support your work in each of your respective areas and departments. So I thank you all. And to our building principals and administrators, teacher staff, custodians, nurses, and office staff, I truly do appreciate all the work that everyone does, and I look forward to 2022 being better than 2021 was and 2023 being better than 2022 was and keeping on with that cycle. So I thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present to the board and community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody have?
I have a question. Dr. Hatter, you mentioned 25 in-person meetings in response to the DEI. How many submissions, how are the submissions going, the online submissions?
Yes, we have just over 60 online submissions that have been submitted to this point. I want to say it's about 65, but don't quote me. I know we're over 60 but under 70. So we're somewhere in that area, as of this morning when I checked.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. We're going to move on to board reports. We're going to start with policies. Cheryl?
Sure. We last met as a group on November 30th. We reviewed eight policies. We have one on the agenda for tonight to adopt. We have five on the agenda tonight as a first read, some updates we made and some recommendations the board will be reviewing. And we'll be meeting again next week on December 20th.
Rashmi, audit?
Sure. So things are going well. We plan to meet in the New Year, and we should have more of an update after that meeting.
Thank you. Mike, fiscal advisory?
Fiscal advisory has a meeting scheduled with the administration. I believe it's January 7th in the morning to review preliminary budget information.
Thank you. And as far as steering goes, we're actually meeting tomorrow. Tonight, we'll be awarding bids for the summer of 2022 work, which, as Mr. Verbois spoke about, is air conditioning in a lot of the elementary schools, large spaces, middle school gym, and high school cafeteria. We are also going to be working on the BCS, the Building Conditions Survey, which has to go up to the state fairly soon. So we have been working through that for many months, and I think we're going to come to some sort of a conclusion, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks. So that's the end of those reports. Going to move on to some action items. I have a motion to approve the November 22nd board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? A motion to approve the treasurer's report for October 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? A motion to approve the claims audit report for November 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? A motion to approve the extra classroom reports for November 2021?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Policies. A motion to approve the first read and adoption of the following policy. It's 1721 student teaching and internships.
So moved.
Okay.
Did anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? We have first reads. The board will conduct a first reading of the following policies and regulations. We have 0320, the evaluation of the superintendent, 4750, promotion and retention of students, 4770, graduation requirements, 6410, authorized signatures, 6700, the purchasing regulation. Did anybody have any questions or concerns on any of them? No? Okay. Personnel. My resolutions. A motion to approve the personal resolutions A through D as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved under certified personnel. We have extra duty. We have correction in addition to the substitute list. We have coaches and co-curricular, a correction of the coach, an unpaid leave of absence, and resignation. And in the classified personnel, we have an appointment and a resignation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Other appointments. A motion to amend the DASSA coordinator appointment made at the July 12, 2021 annual organizational meeting by changing the Yorktown High School DASSA coordinator for the 21, 22 school year from Chris Miller to Christine Roberto DiGiorgio and Christine Roberto DiGiorgio to Christine Circony McCombs and Panu Burges John.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Business office, bid awards. So whereas the Board of Education, in accordance with Article 5A of the General Municipal Law, has invited sealed bids for the furnishing of material and labor necessary for the summer 22 district-wide improvement projects, which bids were opened publicly on November 30, 2021. And whereas the lowest bidder on the mechanical HVAC contract, SNL Plumbing and Heating of White Plains, has requested to withdraw their bid without penalty. And whereas the lower bidder on the electrical contract, RLJ Electrical Corp. of Peekskill, has requested to withdraw their bid without penalty and be resolved that the Board of Education hereby determines based on the analysis of the bids and recommendations of KSQ and ACCI, following bidders are the lowest responsible bidders for the portions of the projects identified herein. We have Gray's Contracting, J&amp;M Heating, Healy Electric.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Whereas the Board of Education has previously established a tax cert reserve fund for the payment of tax refunds pursuant to orders and judgments in the tax subsidiary proceedings known as a tax subsidiary reserve fund, be resolved that the board hereby appropriates and makes transfers from the tax cert reserve fund to the general fund in the amount of $12,758.20 for the payment of the 21, 22 tax refunds.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the following tax cert resolution by order of the Supreme Court of the State of New York held in and for the County of Westchester on the 5th day of November 2021? A school tax refund in the amount of $12,758.20 is due to Yorktown Printing Corporation and/or the Yorktown Penny Saver for the tax year of 2017?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the cooperative transportation agreement with Yorktown Brewster Somers and North Salem School Districts for the 21, 22 school year? There is no increase to the budget.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the insurance settlement with employee number 2964 in the amount of $1,000?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Curriculum. A motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers professional improvement proposals that are listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Special Ed. A motion to arrange the following placements as of December 13, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the committee members of the CSE and the CPSE for the 2120 school year as stated below. CSE Committee on Special Education member the name of Jessica Byrne, she's a parent member, and Carmella Solansky, she's also a parent member. CP, hm? Bynes, I'm sorry. Bynes and Carmella Solansky as parent members. And also on the CPSE, Jessica Bynes and Carmella Solansky as parent member representatives.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. A motion to approve the contract for the 2122 school year between Beacon City School District, the New Yorktown Central School District for tuition of one student from Beacon City School District to the Yorktown Central School District from July 5, 2021 to June 25, 2022 at a prorated cost of $82,475.40.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. At Brookside Schools, $1,736 from the Brookside PTA for a field trip to the Westmoreland Sanctuary. At Yorktown High School, $2,450.50 from the Yorktown High School PTSA to fund mental health awareness workshops for Yorktown High School students. $2,450 from the YCSD Education Foundation, Inc., to fund mental health awareness workshops for Yorktown High School students. $500 from Alliance for Safe Kids to fund mental health awareness workshops for YHS students. The athletic department, $2,578.31 from the Husker Club for ice time practices and games. The Yorktown High School hockey team. And at the Carol, for the Carol Jacobson Fund, $100 from Jeffrey and Diane Barber to fund programs and materials for third grade Carol's Garden at the K3 schools.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you all very much. We're up to board comments. Pete, I'll start with you.
No, just, Ron, thank you for that presentation and for everyone who did it. It was very informative. There's so many great things going on in the district. So it's nice that the community can hear about it and see it also. So, thank you.
Rashmi?
No, I just wanted to wish everyone happy holidays.
Cheryl?
I wanted to say thank you to our directors for coming out tonight, and thank you, Dr. Hatter, for putting this presentation together. I think as we close out 2021 and are here at our last meeting of the year, it was a nice reflection of all the wonderful things that have happened and how far we've come in the year of this pandemic. So it was really nice to look back, and it made me feel good at where we're at right now. Like Pete said, there's so many wonderful things going on right now. So thank you. Thank you to everyone for coming out, and thank you to our entire administrative team and staff. And I wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season and a wonderful 2022.
Lisa?
So I'll join Cheryl in all of those comments. It really is fabulous. Thank you. I know it's not easy, especially now. So it really is very much appreciated. I'll also join Dr. Hatter on his comments for everyone to just spend some time with their families. You know, we're all going through a lot right now, and to spend some time with your family just enjoying each other is really, really special.
Mike?
I certainly can't add to that. Excellent. Well said. Thank you, though, to everyone who came out this evening and presented. It's certainly very helpful and informative for not only us, but for the community. And I wish everyone a wonderful holiday season. Spend it with your family and your friends, and we'll see you in the New Year.
I echo what everybody said. I also want to again thank the directors and all of our staff. 21 school year was very difficult. The whole 21 year with the pandemic, and everybody went so far above and beyond what we could have expected. Every time something was asked of anybody, superintendent on down to anybody in the district, they just said, what can I do? How can I do it? And what is best for kids? And I feel so blessed to be part of a district that thinks about kids first. And I thank all of you for all of your hard work and everything you've done for us. So, thank you. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything? So we're going to go on to public comments. We just have one. Jules M. Do I need to remind, I don't think I need to remind you of our rules, right?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
It would be nice if you guys provided a podium for your stakeholders, as you do for the staff, though, you know, because I have a couple of books here. So in the future, that would be nice. Okay, so I'm here tonight. I'm unscripted, so I'm just going to kind of speak off the cuff. I'm a lifelong resident, so I went to Yorktown School District's amazing district. I had friends of every ethnicity. I never saw systemic racism in Yorktown. My kids go here. They do not see systemic racism. Do kids bully? Absolutely. I have white children, and my child was called a white privileged boy. So I guess maybe systemic racism goes both ways. In respect to that, my job is to make sure Yorktown stays a wonderful school district that it is. I have been defending that. I don't think there's any sort of indoctrination going on in our school district. I do not believe DEI is here. I have read the entire CRS framework, which I do not support a lot of it. I find it to be divisive and race-based. We are trying, we went generations to get away from that, and I don't know who's pushing this agenda, but we're going backwards. There's a, there's a community group here. I'm a lifelong resident. They are pushing an agenda into our school district. Most of them are transients. They moved here, transfers, I should say. They moved here. They did not grow up here. I grew up here. I can speak from the heart from this school district. It is not race. It is not a racist school district by any means. In respect to that, I'm keeping my eyes open for what I see going on in the country. And as you spoke about these books, I'm very concerned. So as I've been defending it, I have people going, you see, you see, it is here. It is here. So there were two books. My son brought home one. I'm not sure if I'm going to get to that, but this one called Gender Queer, I'm very concerned about. And I want to know who vetted this book to think this was appropriate and educational for children. Just a couple of parts that I'm going to read here out of this book, and I want to just, so the board knows this. I got a new strap-on harness today. I can't wait to put it on you, and will fit my favorite dildo perfectly. You're going to look so hot. I can't wait to have your cock in my mouth. I'm going to give you a blowjob of your life. Then I want you inside me. The way she talks about orgasms makes me wonder if I've ever had one. I guess I should get one of these and try it, speaking of a dildo and a picture of a dildo. I remember leaning on my bedroom doorway, imagining how good this vibrator was going to make me feel. I got off by pressing the front of my jeans with the unopened box in my hand. It really never occurred to me to put something in your vagina, not even a finger. It really didn't. So you've never tasted yourself? What? No. Ew. Ha ha. Of course you should try it. As he looks at his finger with vagina slime on it. Nope. Can't do it. I refuse. I have an extremely low sex drive compared to pretty much all of my friends. As a teen, I got bored of masturbation.
Yeah, five seconds.
The last one is, for years, my standard method of masturbation was stuffing a sock into the front of my pants and manipulating the bulge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only person, so I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you all. Good night. Have a happy holiday. We appreciate.